I'd like to call the Thursday, June 13th Board of Education meeting at Stanley T. Williams Community Center to order at 7:00. Call, call.
Chairman Paffa Holzer.
Here.
Vice Chair Anafrio.
Here.
Secretary Sienna.
Here.
Jenna Balsamo.
Here.
Carolyn Candelora. Vincent Mace. Cynthia Rice.
Here.
Salute the flag. Mutual allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Visitors, comments?
Hello, my name is Nancy Tipping. I'm here representing Northford Congregational Church. And as you may know, our church has adopted a deployed Connecticut National Guard unit that's deployed overseas in Guantanamo Bay, Cuba. They will be there for over a year. I just wanted you to know, I'm here to just let you know. I contacted two of the principals, Beth Parker and Carter Welch, about this and asked them if any of the children would like to write to the soldiers, because that's what we're doing. One of the aspects of our adoption is sending letters of support to the soldiers. Both of the principals were very, very supportive. And so, we have sent almost 130 letters and cards from schoolchildren here in North Branford over to Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, as of now. We sent them in two separate mailings. There was one second grade class, Mrs. Bannon, tons from TVES. And there was an article in the paper that was read by the Interact Club advisor, Carrie Sabetta, from NBIS, who had the Interact Club write notes. So altogether, we've been able to send 130 notes and letters of support from the children of North Branford. So I just wanted to let you know that, and we're very happy about that. We're going to be continuing to support this National Guard unit and actually, and also the children that they've left behind, but that's another aspect of it. And I am going to reach out to them again in the fall to see if they might be able to ask the teachers if they could, the children could write thank you notes related to Thanksgiving. So that's what's been going on, and I just wanted to let you know that. And that's basically all I have to say unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I guess we have no student representatives today.
They're long gone. They hit that stage on Tuesday. We're going to start with our presentation. Thank you. It's truly an honor and a pleasure. We have seven retirees this evening that we're going to recognize, and they're people with a number of years, experience, hundreds of years of dedicated service to the North Branford children. It's amazing, I was just making my way around, the connections between our teachers and their children, and how each of them had the other children, either in class or in MRC, really, across that circle. It's amazing, the amount of community that is among this group that is retiring tonight. What I'm going to ask is that when I call your name, one of our administrators is just going to say a little bit about your dedicated service, and then I'm going to present you with a very small token of our appreciation and proclamation. And then I'd like your family to come up and take a photo. And then, and we'll do a group family shot, because you're all family, by the sounds of it. So I think that would be really special. And you're always going to heat me up a few beers tonight, and I don't want that going on too long. So first, we're going to start with Bob Dara. If Bob would please come forward. His wife Patty is here. Patty put in well over thirty years here in the district. That's why I hired her a few years ago. And Dan and Justina are here. Some of our daughter-in-law, and Lillian, as well, who I just introduced. You did say come forward, right? I did say come forward. Do I have a professional photographer? Yeah, I'm very happy to speak for Bob tonight. He is here with his wife Patty, who will be joining retirement. Patty served for many years in North Branford as well, so it's very fitting to have both of them. Their children, grandfather Lillian. If you see how they're handling their six-month-olds, I'm just going to say, you guys can come to my house whenever you want. I have a ten-month-old, so you guys, just tell me where you live. But we're very, very fortunate to have Bob in our department. Bob is a most professional, and he's someone that is very, very serious about his craft. He's always taught a way to connect to the students, no matter their individual ability. Recently, he taught elective sports stories that became very, very popular. And through that, he was able to bring in different avenues that you wouldn't necessarily think would fit in English class, particularly his work with the novel and the film Fences. And the discussions that were brought out were very necessary for not only for our branch of students, but you know, for them going beyond, but everywhere that's going on in the world today. So he did that work, that was tremendous. He's someone who's modeled, always a professional learning leader. Bob is someone that would always, always be working with another teacher. He never had to be the expert. He never had to get credit for anything. He just wanted what was best for his students all the time. And his students really, really enjoyed being in his class. And I just enjoyed observing his classes. He set up a really tremendous field trip every year to Yale for the British Museum that's going to continue. It's a tremendous resource for our students. High integrity, like I said, for an education family. And Bob really believes in every student. Just recently, you know, the last two weeks of school, but then the last week particularly at the high school was very, very stressful. When everyone always likes to joke that we're winding down, and you hear people say, oh, you must be winding down over the summer. You know, we are rattling up, then graduation comes, and then we might have a brief. And final exams, Bob is grading all of his students' final exams. And particularly, there's one student who he noticed grading all his exams, and he didn't have to do this. He noticed that there are scenarios the student definitely could come back and improve upon, he could probably improve after. So he set up for that student to come back in and work on that on his own. Not many teachers do that at that time of year. And Bob, I'm sure, is doing that in his first year of teaching, and he's doing it in his last year in North Branford. So I have personally learned a lot from Bob, just our discussions with his third degree. So I just thank you so much, and we're really going to miss you in North Branford. I appreciate it. A little side note, Bob only gets about forty-five days of retirement, because we have a teacher going on maternity leave. He's maybe English, and Bob is volunteering today. I'm not going to help us to get through until she retires. So that's due to Bob, so Bob. So Bob, I have the manly arrangement for you. All the entire family.
I don't know, I can't.
No pressure, Caitlin.
The board, two, or number seven, since we're in the nation. Bob, thanks for everything.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Enjoy, Bob.
Enjoy your forty-five days.
First act is there is a career in the private sector, teaching high school and Catholic schools. Okay. Kathy Nezus, or Miss Nezus. Kathy Cool. Husband Mike is here this evening. Sons Colin and Kyle, and daughter, Andrew, they're all a mentor. So Caitlin only had thirty-eight years of dedicated service in the district. Took them over here in the choir this year. But Kathy became mom to many of our students working with students with disabilities. And above and beyond, she was always either mentoring, or being class advisor, or volunteer, or stepping up. She's a pillar of the community, and whenever there was anything that was happening in the community, brutal or bad, she was always there to lend her support and love, and get people through. So she's going to be greatly missed. She's been such a part of the fabric of that high school for so many years in this community. So Kathy, it's bittersweet, but thank you for your dedication and service to all of our students in the mission. There's no way I can do justice to Kathy, so we have Suzanne here for some help as well. But Kathy, just in my time with her, has just proven an incredible educator. She's someone that when you walk by her room, no matter what time of day it is, before the bell, during the middle of the day, there's always a bunch of kids in her room, they just gravitate towards her. And they know that they can always go to her for anything. That's a really comfortable feeling for parents to be sending their kids to someone that they have an adulting ability they can trust, and really look out for their messengers. She was more than a teacher, like Scott said. I mean, she was, her title was Special Ed Teacher, but she was a guidance counselor, she was a school psychologist, she was a social worker, she was a mentor. I mean, she did everything for these kids, and continued to. And I know that she's kept the top tab with so many of her students, and is going to continue to do that. She was a class advisor for this outgoing senior class, and it's not a coincidence, the senior class, that she was really one of the kindest classes that we've had in a long time. And I was joking with Kathy that, you know, the senior prom was so, it was wonderful. It was nothing worried about, the kids all came, they had a good time. We had one problem with the DJ that Kathy is not the DJ go-to. She took care of that right away. And the crossing, it really was, she wanted to make sure that the kids had songs, and they wanted to dance to it. And she had a whole, she went around, we got a whole playlist, and said, this is what the kids want to hear. It's just, it's always about the kids. And just a tireless worker, and I mean, we leaned on her in so many difficult situations, and she made me an administrator. And it was really, really fortunate that I had my time with her, thank Kathy.
And I just have a little bit to add. There's no way to be able to really capture Kathy's career in this short a time. She's really had a rich history in North Branford. When I was ready to prepare for tonight, I looked at Kathy's file, and I don't know how old Kathy is, but there was a handwritten resume in there. And when she started in North Branford, she started as a preschool special education teacher, and she started the special needs kindergarten. And she left for a couple of years, and she came back to work at the high school. And it's a huge transition to work from three- to four-year-olds to our high school kids. And she made that transition so successfully, and she's been an amazing contributor at the high school. In her first year at North Branford High School, she wrote in her reflection, "It's interesting to see how they achieve their employability skills. They're demonstrating the importance of persistence and building skills now during high school that will be necessary for successful life experiences." That was a long time ago. Nothing has really changed in our students. Now we call it transition rather than employability, but students still need to learn how to be successful, and how to experience and demonstrate persistence. And Kathy is one of the people who, by quote persistence, has certainly been a role model for our students. But just a few of the things she's been involved in as our school district celebrated her with that. She's been a class advisor, she was head of best buddies, she's been the chaperone for every single activity, whether it's prom, or graduation, project graduation. She's been the heart of so many memorial services comforting our students and staff. Folks have always turned to Kathy to be that person for them when things were difficult. She's been, she could always be found providing relationship advice, parent advice, encouragement, any day of the week. That happens at North Branford High School, Kathy is hard to get. In one of my early observations of Kathy way back in 2002, I wrote, "She has a knack for putting students and parents at ease due to her confidence that anything can be accomplished." And I truly believe that is what is at the heart of Kathy, and has always been. She always has been a candid person who believes for herself that anything can be done, and certainly communicates that to her students. She's leaving a legacy in North Branford. There are a few people in this town that don't know Kathy. I'm honored to have known her for at least eighteen years. I wish her the best in her retirement, and I know that she will continue to touch the hearts of so many people in this community, because she's just as strong and a wonderful person.
So Team Nezus can come here? The retirees, I'll hand you a proclamation.
Oh, it's so far. See you tomorrow. Actually, if you tell me, don't be incorrect. You don't.
You guys enjoy it. Because if you can survive the chords, then you can enjoy your retirement. You're going to be a
I'll be sure to get a workers comp injury, right? Get away off the door.
Underwriting retirement. Having a work misconduct.
Okay, Pam Coler, please come over. Pam's family is here this evening. Her wife Chris, and Melanie, her son, daughter-in-law, and Julianne and Leslie, her beautiful grandsons. Pam has been in the district for thirty-two years, and when I first met Pam, she was in the library, and had been in the library for several years, and it was a position that, through the budget process, we had lost, unfortunately. And Pam stepped up and went into the administrative suite as a full-time secretary and took on that role. She's touched thousands of lives, so many children that have gone through or helped enter this school, had Pam in that library for so many years, and then over the past who's counting? Seven years. Working as a full-time secretary. And it's just always been a constant, always there for all the children, all the families. The first base when you come in, whether it was something that was going on, she was there, and then you professionally courteous, and always went about her business that way. We're going to miss you. It's been great to develop our relationship for over seven years. And well, actually, over ten and a half, in the library. So she's one of our shilling members, so that
I don't think I can say much better than that. But yeah, so Pam Coler's been at Jerome Harrison for thirty-two years. Twenty-five years as a librarian, her professional assistant, her village secretary. During that time, as Scott said, Pam has made a positive impact on the whole school community. She's kept the HHS running smoothly during her tenure. Pam is the first base that students, parents, and staff see when they walk into Jerome Harrison. She is so warm, so calm, so friendly. Hard to meet her, and she makes everyone feel very, very welcome. Pam is unflappable, I know this to be very true. Even the most chaotic of days, Pam is steady and I think even when any issue, walk her away. I am so grateful for all that she's done for students, staff, parents, and me personally over the years. She has a can-do attitude, is a trusty confidant, and most importantly, a truly wonderful person. Pam, we love you very much. Thank you for all your hard work, dedication, and friendship. We'll miss you.
Congratulations, Pam.
Please be careful on these chords, especially over there. Yes. Congratulations, enjoy.
Deb's husband Rob is here this evening, and her parents Joyce and Ernie Benny. It's very, very nice to meet you, Rob. Deb only has thirty-one years of dedicated service in the system. I mentioned before, I've been in North Branford for ten and a half years, and I've gotten to know Deb quite well in those years, honestly, in the school system, with every summer camp and other things around town. And we're going to miss Deb. She's always been there, she's always stepped up, she's always volunteered. She's carried on many leadership roles in the system, moved from grade to grade, and always went about it with an energy and passion for what was best for the team and what was best for the students in the district. Deb is also going to be joining me in forty-five days. She is going to come back in a different role. For selfish reasons, I'm really excited, because I'm getting an incredible educator who's going to come back and work with our kids in different roles and paraprofessional. And I think it's just fabulous, there's another person in the district that's doing the same thing. And what a great way to transition, and what a great way to give back, and just lessen the load a little bit, and walk out at the end of the day, and still have your retirement, and still have your life, with just a few less responsibilities. So I'm probably happier than she is right now. That being said
Thank you so much.
So as Kathy Nezus has worked in North Branford for almost thirty-two years, during her tenure, she's been at both Kentucky Valley and Jerome Harrison. She taught several different grades, been a teacher, worked on credit loan committees, and has been the dean of students, name of few. These past two years, Deb and I have collaborated closely together through her role as being students. Her natural ability to lead while promoting confidence and trust in others is unparalleled. Deb's honesty, sense of humor, and hilarious facial expressions are the nicest things we make that are continued to contribute to our classroom climate. Deb also possesses incredible organizational skills. Whether it's her student data, or all the school supplies she orders with the building over the years, Deb keeps it all organized, easy to understand, and easy to find. Deb, you're a straight shooter, a trusty confidant, a caring friend, and an outstanding teacher. Your ability to form lifelong, well, life-lasting relationships with both your students and colleagues is a true testament to the type of person you are. You've touched so many lives, including mine. I will always cherish our friendship, and wish you all the happiness in retirement. And I'll see you soon.
We'll put Deb at the other end, there's more hair than I do. And a sense of humor. Come to the right. To the right.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Enjoy your forty-five days.
Have a great trip.
Thank you.
Have a great trip.
Thank you so much.
You're doing.
Thanks.
One of my colleagues.
How do you even get more conclusions then? Still working.
I know.
It's a forty-hour bus.
Janice is here this evening, and we have the husband, Pam, son, Charlie, daughter Lauren, daughter-in-law Christine, and son-in-law Kate. All right, let's correct that. There may be somebody, but we're sure. We thank them for giving a quiet night. Okay. Twenty-three years of, again, dedicated service. Janice has carried many roles, and if it's not going to suave, has always been a go-to person, has always assisted. Whenever asked to, she's always stepped up. A constant team player. And we're going to miss her energy, her efforts, and her willingness to always work with the all students. And I know you've worked for a few different principals over the years. And you've been with Carter the last two, my season. Two years. And then, one wonderful question, so with that being said.
Absolutely. So I joke that Janice has been on this tour for, you know, the last week or so with these retirees, and she's had a nice birthday recently, so it's been like this week of Janice. Pay a little more attention to that. So it's been wonderful for me to hear so many colleagues share the wonderful things about Janice, how she's impacted them. I certainly know that through my own experience. My first interaction with Janice was a while back through the Teacher of the Year process. I was a young educator going through it, and was very stressed and nervous. And Janice was on the other end of the table, just smiling, comforting, genuine, putting people at ease, and that's something that she does, and has always done very, very well. I also have the pleasure of teaching our children at the high school, which makes me feel old, but it also makes me really understand Janice. Because you see her kids, you see the genuineness, the humble way that they approach life, their great cheerful attitudes, and you see it comes from Janice. So that's also a great tribute to your kids. Over the last two years, I've just really been fortunate to see her add a craft firsthand, teaching, impacting lives, the relationships she has with staff, the relationships she has with families, and with all the kids, certainly. So what I thought I would share, just a few things that, you know, that the students, the staff, and I will miss greatly about Janice, will miss her warm smile, her great sense of humor, her loving mom style, which she impart's on all. The genuineness in her ability to just cut back and have fun, which she does anytime there's a whole school assembly or anything like that. She knows how to have fun, and it rubs off on the kids, and it's just great to see. And that hasn't changed. The sense of community that she builds in her classroom, it's great. It's truly a family, and any kid that's been part of it knows that they are, and will be for life. Her stories of her own family, you have to be around Jen for five minutes to know how much she loves and she how much she loves and cherishes her family. That's the very fiber of who she is. Her passion for teaching age, I don't know, her passion for writing and teaching writing, her work with visual literacy, we got you down at Center for British Art. I mean, those are great impacts that NTVS and with other colleagues in their margin apart because of Janice. I know Janice, so a couple of things that I thought I would say that I know she will miss. She's gonna miss those great friendships in the camaraderie that she has with staff at University, at Kentucky Valley, throughout the district. The students and the families, I know she has great connections with them. She's going to miss that deeply. The community connections, she'll still be in North Grandford, so you'll still get to interact and see. But I know you'll miss that, some of the enrichment experiences with students. Some of the things that Janice won't miss, I thought I would mention. Janice is not gonna miss report cards. She's not gonna miss this sort of balance assessment. Or data entry. Probably not the PPTs and the 504 meetings. And certainly not that humid, hot type of classroom where there's twenty-five kids. I know you won't miss that. So, I just thought, one of the greatest tributes to Janice, I said it at her retirement party, with the vice principal, every year when those placement letters come in, I'm inundated with parents reaching out and saying, you know, can I just say, no, we're not supposed to request a teacher by friends, please have this at the end. So, my son had them, or my nephew, or my daughter, or whoever. So, it's just these connections that she has in town. Her name, her reputation in North Grandford is just totally perfect, well-respected by all. And it's because of the loving environment that she creates. And lastly, just, we continue to get high school students, college students, they come back to TBS to see her, they're former students, people that have been inspired by you to jump into the profession. And I think one of the great ways that you're leaving is a former student teacher here is just coming to take your spot, which is a great, great dream too. So, Janice has given a ton of North Grandford, TBS and the community will not be the same without her impact. So, we will miss you deeply.
I'm still kind of looking for the back of the pair of shoes.
It's too soon.
For the family, please help our families. We, uh... We have two retirees who are not here this evening. Karen Davis has retired after thirty-six years of dedicated service. And as a matter of fact, Karen is coming back as a building salesman at a middle school. So, we're thrilled to have Karen back. Phil Hama, who was our business associate at the high school for eighteen years, he's retired and relocated. He's on his lawn. Last day of school is Tuesday. I called him Tuesday afternoon, he was something for the board or Massachusetts. I have a plan for you. Send it off with somebody coming soon. Two great employees that we're really willing to miss. I apologize, I have, I have a copy of these signed by our board chair that I'm gonna hand to you. And I just want to do one picture. And you, listening and hearing from all of your family backgrounds, I'd like to do one group shot here in the center. The video is available there. I just come up with a retirement reason, I'll do one picture together and... So, Bob. Bob is holding the video. She didn't wake up. MBIS students, please eat, and parents, that store's are standing there. Please help yourself. You're gonna go on next, you are next on the show to the meeting, so. But have, have, please have an appetizer. Retirees and families, you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to leave. There's, there's food, actually, you take that away now. There's no way that's gonna be watching.
Does he cry?
Please have something to eat.
No, it's for you. I'm good, thank you.
So, you switch the order.
Okay, so what's... That's a bad Italian, I don't like that. I like the worst Italian ever. Ever, yeah. I'll set things outside. If I drink anymore, I'm gonna have to leave during the meeting. Sure. And then I'll think we'll have a...
Ready, switch the rooms. Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna continue with the meeting. Thank you, retirees.
Thank you.
Okay. We're, we're obviously, James wore the... I want to thank the students for coming back during the summer vacation and parents for being here. As you know, at the last meeting, we had, previous meeting that ran over and then we ran out of time and then we asked you to come back tonight. So, one, I greatly appreciate it. I appreciate that you're here during your summer vacation, your third day. Are you bored already? You can't wait to come back? To be honest with you, it takes a couple more weeks. But we're thrilled to have you. We're gonna talk about community service in the program that's at MBIS that's just recently been started. We have Danielle Johnson here tonight from our guidance department and Keith O'Rourke, who are gonna walk you through part of their PBIS model, of how students are giving back to the community and getting ready for their high school experience where they'll have to do community service over their four years. That being said...
Thank you, Mrs. Swenegrin. These are actually high school students now. Just speaks to the character of these, of these children that they're here second days. Guys, is it too late, wanna come back in July? So, speaks to their character that they're here right now. And that's, I think, what this program meant to them, they wanted to come and have the opportunity to present it to you. So, just to give you a little bit of background. At MBIS, we've had a Pride program for about seven years. Our Pride program is our version of the PBIS initiative that started in North Grandford Public Schools about ten years ago, Dr. Rush, about ten years ago. And TBS has rocks and you've heard the different names from the different buildings. We have Pride. And what was discussed starting about a year and a half ago at one of our Pride meetings was that by the time the kids get to eighth grade, it just becomes stale for them. It, it, it doesn't have the same effect and impact. We give out Pride tickets to sixth graders when they get to MBIS. They get a Pride ticket, they think they have Charlie's Golden Ticket. You know, and they're gonna meet Mr. Walker. By the time they get to eighth grade, oh, it's a Pride ticket. And that's just the way middle school is. Things that lull them when they're in sixth, don't lull them anymore by the time they get to eighth. So, Kathy Granfield, who's sitting on the end, this Granfield, who, by the way, is the VFW Connecticut State Teacher of the Year of the state of Connecticut, she was just on. Part of what I think helped Ms. Granfield get that recognition is that she's very involved in the community herself. And we'll talk a little bit about that as time allows for it. But Ms. Granfield came to one of our meetings and said, you know, it would be a really good idea if maybe we start to incorporate some sort of community service component to Pride. And we look at what the high school does, you know, with their, with their senior projects and their cash flow project going into the community, thank you. And we wanted to try to create experiences that we give them a taste of what they have to look forward to at the high school, they were to continue as to our Grandford High School students. So, we took Ms. Granfield's idea. Took our desire to want to get kids involved in the community. This is a very giving community, as you all know. And we created this community service initiative. So, I'm gonna let Mrs. Johnson, who's in charge of our Pride program, tell you a little bit about how this all evolved. And then we'll get to the students. Mrs. Johnson.
So, this past year was the year that we rolled it out, the year before we spent the whole entire school year polling students in terms of things that they were interested in. We also got a lot of parent feedback about what they would like to see kids be, you know, doing in the community, kind of give back. So, we had a committee of eighth grade teachers that, you know, we met about once a month to kind of figure out how we wanted to sort their roles out for them. So, we wanted to start off small and do five hours of community service. So, that's what we asked every student to do. As part of the five hours, they actually had to go into their homerooms and actually talk to the homeroom students about what they did. So, they had to come up with either a PowerPoint presentation or some sort of poster pictures of them doing it because they want to really expose the other students to, to other opportunities that they can also get involved in the community. So, it's been a very successful year. We've had seventy-two percent of our eighth grade students completed the five hours, completed of learning more than six hours a year, so it was fantastic. We had a lot of students who went above and beyond and did more. And we had kids who took the opportunity to not spend all those five hours in one place. They actually spread it out over several places, which I thought was a great idea for them to get experiences in different areas and look at different interests that they may have. This year, we had some of our students choose their presentation, rather than have them come up and talk to them, talk to them a little bit about what they did so that you can kind of see some of the experiences that they've had this year. We have Molly's number four.
Hello, my name is Molly and for my community service this year, I volunteered at a horse rescue. And my mentor was Miss Elizabeth Kaplan. During my eighth grade year, I achieved about twenty hours of community service. For the majority of this, I worked at a horse boarding center and a horse rescue within the Charm Northford. This is an overview of the boarding center. The mornings that I am at the boarding center, I usually help clean out a horse paddock or two and help feed around fifteen or so horses. The horses are usually very hungry by the time we get there and can get overly excited. So, for safety, I go in after my mentor does, that way I have less of a chance of getting hurt.
Always send someone first. That's a good lesson to learn.
Here I am cleaning out Kitch's paddock, I use a fork and wheelbarrow to do this. Along with cleaning out the stalls, I feed a few horses. Some are calm enough where I'm allowed to feed them on my own, but others can be jumpy. I typically go on Saturday or Sunday mornings and the task I accomplish is feeding. I give them hay and grain and make sure that the water isn't frozen over and needs to be refilled. I learned a lot from working with horses. I feel that if I was not encouraged to complete community service, I would have not looked for an opportunity like this. I loved working with them so much that I am going to continue working with horses and other farm animals over the summer vacation.
That's fantastic.
Questions for Molly?
I was gonna ask what a paddock is, but then I saw a picture.
And next we have Mia Park. Hi, my name is Mia Park. And throughout the course of six months, I completed about fifteen hours of community service throughout the school and community at many various places, including Jerome Harrison School, the Branford Community Dining Room, and other places throughout our school. So, at the Branford Community Dining Room, we went in a Tuesday and a bunch of volunteers were there. And we helped to prepare and serve a meal to families from around the shoreline area. And the community dining room serves about sixty to seventy people per day. So, we made a lot of food when we went. And many local supermarkets also donate extra foods and money donations. And there I am, serving foods and, yeah. And so, for Ms. Granfield's charity, I made a slideshow, which she showed at conventions and, yeah. She used my slideshow at her booth and like showed people what the organization was about. And we put a bunch of pictures of all the different captains and boats and people fishing and all the different veterans that she took on trips. And also, I did another thing called ADL, which stands for Anti-Defamation League. And in this group, we spent extra time developing lessons with our partners to help teach younger students about Pride. And then throughout seventh and eighth grade, we have taught about five or six lessons that we created, including like games, and we taught our final lesson in May. And I learned a lot from this experience because working at the community dining room was enjoyable and personal because we got to meet and interact with the people that we were helping. I also enjoyed participating in ADL where we got to be creative and come up with our own lessons to teach the Pride attributes. And then finally, the Veteran Angler Charters was fun for me to make because I love working with technology and it helped a good cause.
Very nice.
And next we have Carolyn Heffernan.
So, for my community service this year, I went to Hasbro Children's Hospital in Providence, Rhode Island to do some arts and crafts with cancer patients and also just talk to some cancer patients. At the time, it was Saint Patrick's Day, so we did like crafts like with those themes and, yeah. So, the organization I went with was Camp Rising Sun. Their like slogan is Camp Rising Sun is a place where kids with cancer have fun. It's a nonprofit organization that brings cancer kids to sleepaway camp during the summer for a week. The kids range from ages five to seventeen. The kids range from ages five to 17. And while they're there, they'll just do fun activities to have fun and not really focus on their illnesses. And I went with this organization because my dad is the director of Camp Rising Sun. And that's just how I got to know the organization. How my community service resembled the attributes of pride. For productivity, I went out and listened to others and helped them just kind of like not remember what they're having through their illnesses and just to kind of like get to know other people since they're always in the hospital. Respect, I listened to all the kids politely and courteously. And if they didn't want to talk about something or if they wanted to talk about something, I would make sure that I either chimed in on a conversation or stopped. Integrity, I gave the kids my undivided attention while doing the crafts. And I let them not do whatever they want, but you know, just have a good time. Dependability, the patients depend on some volunteers to come help them through their treatments and so that they're not, since they're always cooped up in the hospital, so that they could like meet new people. And empathy, I looked into how the kids were feeling during the treatments and thought how that would affect me. I learned that we're lucky to go into school as students that are healthy because I talked to some of the kids and they were so excited to go back to school and so excited to see their friends. And I guess I didn't realize that because I know I was super excited to get out of school for a summer. And so many kids were like, I want to go back to school so bad and see all my friends. And I guess I didn't realize that some people thought that way. And those are some pictures. That's it. Thank you.
And next we have Stephanie Gallagher.
So I completed over 20 hours at a dog adoption event. And so my family and I volunteered here, and it took place in Cheshire. And it was a two-day event. And the dogs came from Georgia, Carolinas, Texas, Tennessee, et cetera. So the event had the volunteers organized by groups. So I was a scout. And so we got a designated area of dogs. And then whenever a person came by and wanted to look at a dog, then I would take the dog out for them to see. And I can evaluate how they interact with each other. And so also, in the next day in the morning, we would clean out their kennels before day two starts. So it would be clean. So people who would usually attend the event saw these dogs online beforehand. So prior to the event, I uploaded the dog's information and their photos so they could see like how they are if they wanted to see the dogs at the event. And these websites were Adoptavet and Pet Finder. So what I learned volunteering here is that communication is an important skill because if you don't communicate with each other about a problem, for example, that problem may never get fixed. And so it was key here because it could be loud at times and it could be hard to hear each other. So like if no one spoke up about like if a dog looked ill or if a dog hurt each other, then no one would know.
Very nice.
So this was the first year we did this. This was a pilot program this year. We were hoping that students would engage and commit themselves to at least five hours as a starting point to see what it's like to volunteer within the community. And it was very successful. Close to three quarters of the eighth graders participated. Over 1,000 hours were performed. We're still getting sheets in from students that they didn't turn the paperwork up. So that number keeps coming up. But the kids really took to this. And it's exciting to think about the potential for this in the future, especially at our age level. How we can engage students in the community and make curriculum connections and make for real-life, real-world learning experiences and opportunities for them. A program like this is successful for a couple of reasons. They come from a community where everybody is very giving. And they have great role models in many of their teachers. Ms. Granfield's charity, Connecticut Veteran Angler Charter. It's an organization that Ms. Granfield started several years ago. How many votes do you have right now, Captain?
Five.
Five votes. And Ms. Granfield takes veterans on fishing trips that some suffer from PTSD and they're getting over some of the emotional trauma that they might have encountered while serving. And Ms. Granfield's been recognized at the national level. Ms. Granfield's students, not to embarrass her, would love her and they want to be like her. And this is the example that is being sent by Ms. Granfield. Mrs. Thomas, who's the state board of education, social studies teacher in our school and teaching the students that give back to the community, just like you do. So they have some very solid role models of the teachers that are showing them that they can talk the talk and they can walk the walk as well. And kids, you're high school students now, so keep it going when you get to NBHS. And thank you for coming tonight.
Does anybody think that what they did for their project is something that maybe they'd like to do for a career someday? Sometimes you find out that you really do like it. Sometimes you find out that, okay, I did it, I'm moving on. Well, good luck, guys.
So just before you do go home to relax, I want to say how proud I am. I don't know how we were selected, but you did an amazing job. You got up there, you represented yourselves and your organization. And just sharing your feelings and your empathy and your compassion towards your organization. I mean, you helped animals that in a rescue situation, you know what eventually happens if they don't get rescued. Saving lives and then working with children with cancer and working in a soup kitchen and giving back when people are at a different point in their life. That's what it's about. We can't put that into a textbook. Those are things, your life experiences, that are going to shape or mold you as you move forward. And that's who you're going to be, and it starts now. So I encourage you to continue to be active members in the community, to continue to give back throughout your high school years. And great things will happen. You'll have very successful futures ahead. So thank you. Could you just walk along and shake everyone's hand? Because I know I'm proud of you and I want to have you shake the board's hands, okay? Parents, thank you for bringing your children tonight. Thank you for being so patient. We really appreciate it. Thank you. And you should be so proud of them. Thank you. Ms. Granfield, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, thank you so much. Turn the lights back on. It's like we're missing a cue, too. There may be one that's on. So we're going to go back to two motions.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 16, 2019 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
A second discussion? On favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 16, 2019 Board of Education special meeting as submitted.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Personal resignations?
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Erica Bezuto, reading specialist and intervention coordinator at Jerome Harrison Elementary School, effective at the end of the 2018-2019 school year.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye. And I'll also make a motion to approve the resignation of Mr. Nicholas Shampf, physics teacher at North Bramford High School, effective at the end of the 2018-2019 school year.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Luciana Corelli to the position of 1.0 Grade 2 at Jerome Harrison Elementary School to be placed on Masters Step 5 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers. Second. Discussion? On favor? I'd like to make a motion to appoint, to the appointment, of Nicole Kelly to the position of 1.0 RTL Reading Specialist at Jerome Harrison Elementary School to be placed on Masters Step 10 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers. Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Brianna Scher to the position of 1.0 Grade 1 at Jerome Harrison Elementary School to be placed on Masters Step 1 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers. Second. On favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to the appointment of Shaena Walsh to the position of 1.0 Social Worker at Jerome Harrison Elementary School to be placed on Masters Step 3 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers. Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Michaela Ritchie to the position of 1.0 Mathematics at North Bramford High School to be placed on Bachelor Step 1 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of William McKinney to the position of 1.0 Mathematics at North Bramford High School to be placed on Masters Step 6 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye. I'll make another motion to approve the appointment of Jill Iscernia to the position of 1.0 English at North Bramford High School to be placed on Sixth Year Step 7 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Christopher Person to the position of 1.0 Business at North Bramford High School to be placed on Masters Step 1 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye. A motion to approve the one-year-only appointment of Jessica Berubi to the position of 1.0 Guidance Counselor at North Bramford Intermediate School to be placed on Masters Step 1 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the one-year-only appointment of Samantha Danielle to the position of 1.0 Grade 5 Teacher at Totucket Valley Elementary School to be placed on Bachelor Step 2 in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye. I'll make a final motion to approve the appointment of Megan Rusick to the position of Assistant Principal of North Bramford Intermediate School to be paid in accordance with the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford School Administrators Association.
Second. Discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Question or reply to the other information under appointments?
Couple of hires.
The secretaries. Oh, I'm sorry. I was lost in the motion. So I will be brief. I want to thank the administrative team. You just, we just read through a list of 11 people. And this happened from the last board meeting today. I have a couple of more that are in the...
Eye blank.
Eye blank. So thank you. I appreciate you making the efforts to bring the best people in. We had a great pool of applicants because we got onto it early and right away when we got these retirements and these resignations. A lot of them were shortage areas. And to be able to get the quality of people and you'll get to meet them at the beginning of next year, I just want to thank all of you. A lot of teamwork to do that. So thank you. We also have filled the two positions at central office. I'll be very brief. Angela Gration, who has already started as a 10-month Secretary One position. She's been working on a limited schedule for right now and is very excited to be here. And Camille Dejooio...
Dejooian.
Dejooian. That's a tough one, Dejooian. She's our 12-month secretary. They both came highly recommended and many years of experience, not only in education, but in the private sector and highly qualified. They were two, our two highest scores are an assessment. We had 73, 73 assess, oh, I'm sorry, 85 applicants. We narrowed to 27, 85 took the test. We narrowed the pool to 27, 27, actually, 27 took the test. And then of the 27, I'll get these numbers right. We brought four into interview and then selected the two. And the two that we hired were the two highest scorers. So we're really excited. Okay? All right, moving on.
Is there a comment? That's all you can ask, Scott?
Okay, we are on donations, I believe. We did the retiree's.
I'm just telling you to keep going.
Yeah, I'm going to roll. There are no donations at this time. We're out of time for field trips. There's nothing to approve. The board briefs are there and accentuate what the administration did and continue to do right up to the last day. The next piece that we have is the Healthy Food Certification. Don's going to walk you through the information. I did bombard a little bit of information today out to Sean. And it's not something I'm going to go into because it's volumes of federal and state guidelines. But she will share any of that with you, and she can send it to you.
I will send it to you because I can only run a very small portion of it.
No, because it's...
And I will pull it in.
And then she'll get it out. So thank you for doing that. So Don, I'm going to turn it over.
Thanks, my pleasure.
I just want to point out, there's actually one error in the text. It's not six cents a meal, it's still 10 cents a meal. The six cents was something else that I got a little confused with. So basically, at this point in time and before July 1st, the board has to make a choice between whether or not it's going to participate in the Healthy Food Certification and continue to receive that additional 10-cent subsidy, which comes out in the neighborhood of about $11,000. And if you choose to do that, there are actually three motions that would be recommended. The first one is to participate in the program. But then the second one is there are some exemptions that you are allowed to do for both food and beverages. And the conditions are the same. What has to happen in order to do that, in order to serve things that are outside the guidelines? The sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on a weekend. The sale is the location of the event, and the food items are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. So this basically covers the concession.
Our snack bar at the football games. In order for us to continue to do that, we have to be a part of this first motion. And then for beverages, it's this, I don't know if you want to read through the whole thing, but it's the same thing, to be able to do the same thing with beverages. If we want to sell soda, Gatorade, stuff that the kids will buy at sporting events, like at the concession stands.
Do you have to be part of the Healthy Food Certification?
Well, to sell. The other option is to not participate.
Right.
And in that case, the one thing that's important to remember is we still, in order to get the reimbursement, for the main reimbursement for school lunch, which runs between $160,000 and $180,000 a year, you still have to comply with the guidelines for food that is sold during the school day. If you choose not to participate and get the extra 10 cents, then, and one of the things we didn't talk about is, for example, if you... You cannot sell unhealthy snacks during practices. You can only sell them during games. If you don't take the 10 cents, then you could also sell them during practices. But you're still locked in within the school day to the normal nutritional guidelines. So what you're doing is it's the tails, mostly after school or on weekends, where you're deciding whether you're going to serve healthy snacks and get the 10 cents except for games or not.
That, the kids really aren't paying any...
Did we have the figures on...
Is that what we kind of figured out last time?
Did we have any figures on if we don't, we go back to the way it used to be before we got the 10 cents, how much more money we would take in? we got the ten cents, how much more money we would take in?
Yeah, but we won't get the hundred.
We won't get eleven thousand dollars.
Right, you won't get eleven thousand dollars.
Right, that's, you won't get the eleven thousand, but what kind...
If you're selling foods the kids want, what difference is it gonna be?
We won't get a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
It's eleven thousand.
No, it's only eleven thousand dollars.
No, no, no.
It's eleven thousand.
For this.
To participate or not participate.
Yeah, so it's eleven thousand.
But you mentioned a hundred and sixty, so...
That's, I just want to make sure people understand that when you, for example, regular school lunch, you don't have, this healthy food certification has nothing to do with that. We still have to comply with those guidelines in order to get the reimbursement. And that reimbursement is in the neighborhood of three dollars a meal for free and reduced lunch and seventy cents a meal for all lunches.
But that lightens, that's not...
But that's not the...
That's not related to this.
That's not related to this.
So, it lightens up or it lessens the restrictions on what can be sold, not by lunch?
So, this, Cindy, is what I wanted to do, if you don't mind my speaking.
No.
So, I felt like, and I spoke to Scott today about it, and the reason why I got inundated with federal guidelines at around noon, right, roughly noon, is because I said, we talk a lot about, we can't have this, and it's very vague, and we have to have certain portions controlled, and we have to, but I've not heard any facts at all.
Right.
And I said, so I'm very fact-based, so I wanted to see the federal guideline. I probably should have watched out what I said when I said that because it is long, there's a snack program, there's a breakfast program, there's a lunch program, there's a lot of programs. So, I said, I can't vote tonight because now I don't have the information because it's voluminous. And so, I don't feel like I've had it up to this point. I do understand now, though, that the ten cents is different than the federal lunch guideline. So, that's like the very basic piece of it. I just don't know where we would benefit financially and where we wouldn't. And that's kind of the issue I'm struggling with because I honestly can't vote because I don't know how to vote.
Right.
Because I don't feel educated enough on the issue. And if we were running in the black, I would have no problem with it because I'd be like, oh, yeah, we must be doing it right, and we're doing the ten cents, and everybody's eating healthy. But year after year, we're running at a deficit, and it's not improving, and we keep talking about it, and nothing's happening. So, I feel like to vote on this, for me, and I'm not, you know, and we all have different opinions, I don't have enough of information to do that. But I also realize, I believe there's, it's time sensitive.
July first.
It is time sensitive.
Right, right.
So, if we don't vote on it tonight, or if we can't vote on it tonight, we're gonna be in a quandary of...
So, this is yearly vote, that means?
Yeah, it's every year. So...
Well, yeah. Let me start over. Let me get my thought back together. I've spoken to a couple of people about this. Former board member who is really into the lunch program, and I feel like just throwing away eleven thousand dollars is not, it's not gonna change very, very much at all as to what we can serve because there are still federal guidelines.
How is that data, what data do you have to back that up? See, that's what I'm saying. Like, you're still not giving me any data. You're just, I want data, I want fact. I want to know what we can serve, what we can't serve. I want to know how that would play out in a lunch program. I feel like there has not been any due diligence done.
Right. You say we're losing the eleven thousand dollars because we give up the ten cents, but what could we potentially gain from bringing back other food choices or different choices for them that they might actually want to purchase? Like, you, I get this side of it, I don't see...
We've only been doing the ten cents for one year. We only went back to the ten cents for one year.
I think it's two years.
Two years, okay, two years.
It's been as long as I can.
Okay, so two years we've been doing the ten cents. Prior to that, we were still in the red, and the lunches haven't, there wasn't any change. It wasn't like we were making more money. So...
That's even more problematic.
Yeah.
See, one of the problems in terms of the data is we don't, we've never really tracked the difference between, for example, the sales in the concession stand during a football game versus the sales at a practice from the T-bird's nest. So, you know, that's just, that's all outside sales, and I, you know, it would take a fair amount of reconstruction to go back and actually try to do it event by event.
You wouldn't be able to do that. You'd have to do it moving forward.
Right, right.
I also want to add that the recommendation is to get us in line with other surrounding towns for cost of meals. We're behind by twenty-five cents for all the surrounding towns that are per meal charged. So, that would add a quarter per meal at each building, which would obviously add, you know, add to our, that's not anywhere here, but that's...
Well, that could be done in July. There's not, there's not a July first deadline.
So, we still can do that, but I'm trying to recoup and say that, you know, some of your concerns are what you're saying. We have a July one deadline. So...
I just think there's no discussion.
But if you really want to delve into this and then share those volumes for next year, I think your safe bet is to get the reimbursement and get your ten cents, your eleven thousand dollars. We have to stick with the federal guideline, the impact of the money on the increase of the quarter, and then we go into it next year with a clear idea of where we're at, with what we're doing and how we're doing.
So, essentially, the reimbursement that we get, we have guidelines, we have to serve them this kind of food. The ten cents would be, rather than serve healthy food, we could have some of the things that they like and would purchase.
But only after school.
Only after school.
It's the book ends.
It's before and after, so it's at concession stands. After school, like we have right now, we bought two vending machines that we have that kids can go in after school, it's open to them, and purchase food and drinks. And we also started, which, you know, we hasn't really had enough time, the ability to order something for after lunch. So, that just started, we got that going, and then teachers have the ability to order during the day to expedite because they only have twenty-five minutes or so. The kids can do the same thing, so they come right through, and they get their meal, and it's ready for them, pre-prepared for them.
Are the numbers down for how many kids actually buy hot lunch because they don't like the hot lunch?
I wouldn't say they don't like it. I think that, you know, listen, if you're not a whole wheat pasta person, you may not get it. And the administrators are sitting here, you know, and, you know, the high school has a sandwich bar and then the salad bar, and there's a line every day there. They do serve the typical, the mac and cheese and the chicken fingers that are approved per, you know, so there are a lot of foods that are kid-friendly that they like. So, I don't know if anyone wants to jump in and just speak to...
But how about the other schools? What I want to know is if the amount of hot lunches being purchased is down because the kids don't particularly like the food, and then if you go up on price to try and recoup it, but it's not gonna happen because we're gonna buy it anyway.
That's always a double-edged sword, and that's one of the reasons you struggle with those decisions when you, when you, if you look...
So, has there been a study done like it, like any kind of...
We can compare number of, number of lunches sold last year in the district compared...
But do it by school. It would make sense to do it by school.
By school, from last year to this year. Michael has all of that information.
Yeah.
If you go back, if you go back...
Because then you can see, right?
Right. If you go back to, like, eleven, twelve, twelve, thirteen, so it's maybe six or seven years ago, the number of lunches that we were serving per student, per student enrolled, was higher. Over the last three or four years, it's sort of flattened out. It's lower than that. This year, eighteen, nineteen, that number on a, you know, on a per-student basis was actually a little higher than it was last year. So, we did have a little uptick in participation in eighteen, nineteen.
I spoke to two young men today. They're going to a different school, and they said what they missed about North Bramford was the wrap station at the high school. Wherever they go, they don't have that. And they said they missed that, that that was a really good station, that it was a wrap station. I do know that, have we looked, have we, have we checked out District thirteen at all? Mark Basil has a good food program. I think...
We've mentioned this like forty-two times.
No, they've talked, the two districts.
They have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I don't, they talked about. I know you brought it up.
But the difference there was the amount that they pay into their, they have fourteen employees that work there, and what they pay for their health insurance, what the board pays them for their health insurance. So, if you go apples to apples, I think it's a little different, I think, when you compare what...
No, I mean, they have different stations, no, they have different levels of, levels of stations or something like that at the cafeteria where there's, there's the one, but then they have like a deli sandwich where there's like more meat on it. They pay, they pay a little bit more for, yeah, there's an upcharge. There's an upcharge on it, but...
But that's not a bad idea.
But there's a little more meat on it, which...
They do upcharge. But I know a significant difference is the amount that their board pays them to the health insurance for their, they have fourteen cafeteria workers employed in the district. So, I'm saying...
But that's not revenue. That's, again, an expenditure, so I'm not sure how that...
Yeah, but I think our board...
And our, our workers... Right, but our workers don't bring in revenue, nor do they plan. Like, there's no meal.
We've got some, we've got some really good cooks.
No, but they don't, I mean, I'm not talking about the cooks. I'm talking the large portion of, it is lunch assistants. I don't know what their exact title is.
Free and reduced lunch.
No, no, the people who are working in the position.
Oh, the cafeteria workers.
They have cafeteria workers. I didn't know if they had a fancy title. But like the larger portion of it, like they're, they're not, they don't necessarily bring in or plan.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So, giving them health insurance isn't gonna change the quality of their work in any way to increase the revenue.
The overall cost.
Right, but that's an expenditure, so I'm not understanding how that would impact us. It would only negatively impact us.
He, through his sales and what the board puts in, he absorbs a lot of it through his sales, but a big portion of it is the health insurance that the board picks up. So, we'd have to compare, you know, how many meals he sells.
No, I'm not even talking about comparing that.
Oh, you're just...
I'm just talking about...
You're talking about participation in...
Correct. We're talking about, yeah, I'm not talking about any of that. I'm talking about encouraging the kids, and there's like a...
Different ideas to increase that fall within...
Right, to sell food. There's a main level, you know, I don't wanna say main level, but there's standard lunch, I guess. There's standard lunch, and then they have like some deli counter or something like that where you can get more of a deli sandwich with, you know, more meat on it, and there's an upcharge and...
And does that all fall within the guidelines?
Well, if it do, yeah. I think if it's à la carte and it's separate, or extras, as they call it, then...
I mean, I think we should do some creative things like that. But, I mean, I will bring back all the information I find and bullet it.
So, what do we do tonight? We've got to...
We've gotta vote, we've gotta vote.
Right. I was just gonna say, because if we don't vote, we have to come back before the end of this month.
I mean, I think, I think what I would recommend is that we put this on the board initiative as a special project, that we work with the superintendent and with Mr. Scherker, and we really work through this finally because I cannot stand hearing myself talk anymore about this, and I would even like...
I can't stand hearing you talk about it.
I know, because I call you, I'm like, I'm a rich girl, because I can't take it. So, I think we vote on it and kind of move on.
Okay. Then I'm gonna make a motion to certify that all food items offered for sale to students in the school under the jurisdiction of the North Bramford Board of Education and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July one, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups.
Second.
Roll call vote, oh, discussion. I thought we were talking about, yes. Roll call vote.
Chairman Pappa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Afria?
Yes.
Secretary Shiana?
Yes.
Janice Althamal?
Yes.
Cindy Rice?
Yes. All right. I'd like to make a motion to allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July one, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring at, after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event, and three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store.
Second. Discussion, roll call vote. Chairman Pappa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Afria?
Yes.
Secretary Shiana?
Yes.
Yes, I thought you were saying no, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Janice Althamal?
Yes.
Cindy Rice?
Yes. All right. I'd like to make a motion to allow the sale to students of all beverages not listed in section ten dash two-two-one Q of the general, Connecticut general statutes during the period of July first, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. The sale is at the location of the event, and three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store.
Second. Discussion, roll call vote.
Chairman Pappa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Afria?
Yes.
Secretary Shiana?
Yes.
Janice Althamal?
Yes.
Cindy Rice?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously, we're gonna skip over the spotlight from BIS and move on to post-high school plans. Are you with me?
We're with you.
Page five. You have attached on your exhibit D, the graduating class, eighty-six percent of the students will be continuing their education after high school. They go into just listing the colleges of public acceptance and the level of competitiveness for the schools. We're really happy. It's interesting, I think, when you look at the one hundred and thirty-one students in the graduating class and the breakdown of percentages of students going to two- or four-year schools, and you understand and you see kind of a shift in the trend of kids going on to schools of trades and going to community colleges and kind of really making decisions where they're thinking about the financial impact than job potentials. And it's interesting to be a part of that, and as we refocus and direct our curriculum as we get students ready for post-high school plans, how that will drive what we're doing, you know, at the high school with STEM, with, you know, hands-on opportunities and things that I think we need to really look into that will give our kids a real head start moving on. So, we're really happy with that. I always throw out a number, our ninety-ninth student in class of one hundred and thirty-one who is accepting is going to Penn State. So, that's...
Really?
Yeah, that's pretty impressive.
That is.
Our two, number one and number two in the class are both All-Americans in different sports. There are only twenty-two All-Americans in girls who come across this year in the entire state, and that includes public and private schools, boarding schools, and day private schools. Twenty-two females were selected, and it was an incredibly rigorous application process, and we have not only one, but two. Our number one is going to Boston College as a goalie, and our number two is going to a very small competitive school. It's a blank. We, we, we...
Wow. It's fantastic.
That's...
That news travels, by the way, so it's really, I can tell you for the middle school athletes, it's filtered down, and it's actually making some of them very excited to play.
Very motivated. You're All-Americans, that's, you can say that.
It's huge.
It's huge, and it's legitimate. It's an All-American. It's the same thing that the kids from graduate, our kids from North Bramford are represented with those kids, so kudos.
Just that, specifically, I just wanted, since I'm such a big fan, a lot of the times I want to just give positive feedback. Just the fact that you're offering college credits, and there were so many kids that were being, graduating with distinction, that was another thing. That's really like filtering down to the, and I hear it because I have a daughter that's in middle school, and I hear her friends, but it's really keeping the kids in the school district interested to move into the high school, that there's all these offerings, and that they feel very prepared to, you know, excited to kind of move along.
And we're excited. One of our new hires is certified in AP Economics, and that's something we wanted to do. We just hired a person who's gonna be able to offer, that'll be our thirteenth AP course in high school that's small. So, we're excited.
And there was another, there was a new, in the graduation, there was a new distinction, seal of biliteracy.
Right, we just started that last year. So, students who...
All right, so we're a year behind. I guess I missed it last year, sorry.
It's a great, it's a great honor. So, we wish them well. We're proud of them, and, you know, those, you saw the graduation, the kids were excited and did a great job. I'm certifying under section ten, one fifty-one B of Connecticut statute that you'll complete all evaluations as required to satisfy our credentials as a school accreditation. So, those will be done by June thirtieth. My evaluation, I spoke with the board chair, and we were agreeing that I would hand out to you a PowerPoint that we will not show this evening. You can take it and go through it. There's a few things that I'll just touch on really quickly. The Spanish goal of offering and doing that went really well. We exceeded our numbers of kids who scored at a percentile or above and took Spanish one. Our SAT scores for this junior class were above the state average in both math and verbal, and we had the three-year scores and the growth over time of that class. We were excited about that. And then I had another one in there for all of the safety with the additional cameras of this building here, Totucket Valley, and some of the upgrades, and then the new entry system where you have to go through and enter your license. So, all of those things, you can look through those.
Did you predict how many kids that took Spanish for their eighth grade year got got into Spanish 2? Did you put that in there?
For my Spanish goal...
I need to add that information.
Perfect.
The overall goal is 100 out of 124, and I believe it's 115.
It's 115. Els go into Spanish.
Yes, nice.
100 of 124 eighth graders. So the green is the measurement, okay? After you read the goal, that you already have the original rules that I gave you. So if you have additional questions before the July board, and that's when we can discuss, and that's when we'll do all non-certified contracts in my contract. I have a folder of supporting evidence that I can send to you if you'd like to see. So I'm not gonna give everyone this folder unless you, unless you want...
If we have, we need a drill down, we can ask.
Yes, and I can send it to you. If you specifically, like, tools for schools, I don't think you want a packet of the number of walkthroughs and the ceiling tile was discolored and...
What would interest me, what would interest me more from the tools from school is when it was entered and when it was corrected. That would be the information I would want. Like, if this tile was up there for four months and not taken care of, that would be interesting to me, as opposed to...
Right.
There were 50 million things on, and they all got corrected one day right before the walkthrough.
Well, now, because the walkthroughs, the walkthroughs come through it at four different times.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Like, it's not just a walkthrough thing, but it's being done...
Yeah.
On a regular basis as it arises.
And then the, if there are no questions on any of that, so you have that, and you can spend time with them. And then if you do want additional, just let me know in a minute or two. The authority to hire, as I mentioned, I have two employees that I'm looking to hire next week. We're obviously out of session right now. In the past, I've had the ability to reconvene my administrative team and a teacher or two to come in and interview, and then hire, offer, and sign a contract, so...
This is teachers' only.
This is only teachers'.
Yep.
So this allows me to do that. If we don't, then I'm gonna need to have you come back next week or the following week when I can bring these people.
And I just want to clarify, so that everyone understands the hiring, because it was something we halted last year. But just going through the contracts now, you hire according to the union contract, basically, as far as...
It's a straight line.
It's a straight line.
There's no wrinkle room, nothing.
Right, right, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that authority be granted to the superintendent to hire certified teaching personnel effective immediately until the September 19, 2019 Board of Education meeting.
My second. Discussion? Roll call vote? Chairman Pappa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Afria?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Salma?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's it for my report.
Oh, committee report, sorry. Negotiations?
So there's a looming issue with health insurance rates. And I wouldn't do it outside of executive session. If you don't want to do an executive session, I could just, I do have something written I could give to the negotiations subcommittee, and then you can read it and get back to me. Either way is fine with me.
We should probably go to executive session, but can we hold it after we get the committee reports?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Okay, so let's go, move on to budget.
Do you want to do it now, or you want me to?
You can.
All right, last week we had a budget meeting, last Thursday. We just went over the current budget status, which everything looked fine. We went over some of the capital and other projects that were in the middle of. The unit ventilators at TVES and NBHS. That should be awarded to somebody at the end of the month. The HVAC at MBIS was awarded to Perfect Tem. The canopy at Jerome Harrison, it will be getting started. The steel's on order. The elevator was awarded to Baystate Dover Equipment. And we're going, we're not gonna do a hull replacement, we're... We went with the other option. And the NBHS feasibility study is out. We didn't award it, it's out to bid.
It's out to, what's the number?
It's, it's bad.
It's bad?
It's random, we're in... So now, right, there were six...
Oh, right, 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 right. Right. Good.
Right, I have it right there in my hand, there were six of them, yeah. Didn't continue looking at my papers.
That's a nice number.
Eleven and one through.
And that's pretty much it. All right.
The only other thing for budget and operations is you have a proposed meeting schedule.
Oh, yes. I'll make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 Budget and Operations Subcommittee meeting schedule as submitted.
Second. Discussion?
I have a question. The, for June 16, it's an earlier one, and then I'm looking, we're going to do a curriculum that is like two days later. Is on June 18?
It's again because of the retirement, I believe.
We have the budget.
So you don't have one on the same day as last?
No, that's curriculum, so retirements would be on June 16. And so we'd have to have curriculum on the 18.
No, curriculum and retirement usually go the same day. It's budget that goes on a different day, because today you didn't have a budget meeting.
Just like to that.
Okay, so the 16th is Tuesday.
16th is a Tuesday, I believe, and the 18th is a Thursday.
I think, and I don't want to speak up at Atlas Rights, but she had asked about the potential for having the board meeting prior to the graduation. Was that something that you were interested in?
Like, right before?
No, like, the week before, or...
Oh, oh.
Just because it gets so, you know, like, this week was the promotion, it was the graduation, it's this, you know, I didn't...
All right, well, this is...
But I mean, we could change that come...
You can.
We can, just, we just want to do it 30 days out.
Oh, yeah, I mean...
Well, then, we don't have any snow dates in that.
Exactly, as it gets closer.
We can't really plan something now for next June, we don't know.
We could just...
Well, just a thought of possibly doing it. As we extend the year, you're extending everything out anyway. So if you wanted to do it before...
Yeah, we could just sit tight on it for now.
Just, just a thought.
All in favor?
Aye.
She's just trying to mix you up there, Mary.
I did.
I'll take it.
Hey, you know what? How about you talk about it?
So this evening, we had our MBIS instructional coaches visit the curriculum committee. It was Jessica Cavalero and Florence Consonmilkow. I missed it out, because I think there's a T I forgot in there. So what they did was present to the committee what they are doing, as well as some of the instructional changes we are making at the available school based on the availability funding through the school improvement grant that we received. We successfully spent $472,000 this year between professional services, the two positions, as well as supplies. We talked about moving to a reader's workshop, middle school model, which includes a novel approach, which is book clubs, as well as some of the traditional components of a reader's workshop, as well as moving to a new mathematics resource, which is called Cluster of Mathematics, which has been vetted by Ed Reports and the State Department of Education in terms of usability alignment, as well as rigor. So I don't know if Gina would like saying that.
It was interesting.
It was. They enjoyed it.
And you have that calendar as well?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 Curriculum Instruction and Strategic Planning Subcommittee meeting as, meeting schedule as submitted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
There was no pension meeting policy. Is this policy still here?
All right, last month, we looked at 1245 and we decided to take out the oral exam. So it's back in here to approve it with those amendments, but if you look at page 4, 6...
It's still written in there.
Well, that's why...
It's in yellow, and 6 of 6 to take out...
That's why we just highlighted them, because you voted to eliminate this last time, but not these, so they're highlighted, or whatever you like to do with them.
To make a motion to approve 1245 health assessments, but to take out the on page 4, 6, and 6 of 6 versus oral health assessments, take that out of the language, because last time we said we didn't want to do the...
And we discussed council, and it's fine?
Excuse me?
You consulted council, and it was fine?
Well, I had given you the, the opinion of the council last time, and they, they weren't really in favor of eliminating the whole oral health, because they're saying that basically, I actually have it again if you want to look at it.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was an update on it.
No, I mean, it's the same as it was last time.
But if we leave it in, then someone reads the policy and asks, are we doing oral...
I like eliminating it personally.
I like eliminating it.
Okay.
It's not mandated at the state level.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's not mandated at the state level.
Until it becomes mandated, it doesn't want to be in there.
So... Why don't we vote on that policy?
We don't have a second, right? Did anybody second it?
No, I was gonna say, we didn't even do that.
Oh, Jeff, I thought Beth made the motion.
I did make the motion, well, I'm making it. A motion to approve policy P1245 health assessment estimated, uh, no, not estimated.
With the options.
With changes where we omit the oral assessment. It's on page 4, 6, and 6 of 6.
Second.
Do I need the numbers for that? Do I have to see the numbers?
Just... As highlighted in yellow, Beth, add that.